I can't hang this job down.
My wife and I, she doesn't even take me down. She just purchased thirty chips.
Your retirement policy might be more attractive.
So next time, who's our, our chickens laying eggs? I talked to you, Ron.
You did?
Yeah.
You can tell me anything, man.
He's busy. He's a busy man. He lives in D.C.
I know. She's up there every day, wants us hard.
No, she's over there.
Oh, I thought it was like you and her code book.
Oh, yeah. God. I've got half of it. Oh.
I've got the subdivision code sitting in my office.
We need it.
I've also got the international code for, uh, sitting in my crossroads. And plus, it comes in handy because I'm gonna have to be on it tomorrow.
Well, I was just gonna ask if I could have a printout of our zoning for current zoning ordinances 'cause I had a binder a couple of years ago, but I've got.
That's no good.
Yeah, exactly.
Chris, no good. Can you make a note to get by me? Also, the code, King William Code. That's something where you have to go over and set a record until all that's silly printing off.
Thank you.
January, January, July is the new group. Uh, subdivision.
I think he's falling asleep. I'm sorry, what?
What? All right. That data work session will be informal. No need to, I'll call me to order them for both of already. I don't think doing.
Um, no. Did you push the levels?
Um. So the purpose of tonight's session is to make our final changes to the zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Right.
I'll, I'll kick this out of what I would like to do before I send it over to you guys for what you would like to do. My understanding of the process is we'll need to go through and I think worthwhile offices for us to, to knock out the section, you know, with our best ideas. And then having done that, share it with everyone else and get there is very important to success. So before we can share with anyone else, we need to use it all ourselves. Come up with what we can over the best that we can. And with that in mind, I'm wondering how quickly we're going to get that book written, shared with others. And then what we need to do is, um, did you, uh, did you have an idea of what you'd like us to finish or?
Sort of.
Okay. Can you share with us what your ideas are?
Well, it's something that's relatively kind of popped into my head. Because y'all know I've been working on that. Well, y'all know. We've been working on the Mass Utility Plan. Is that P F D? Well, um, and we're doing these ordinances. And I haven't even looked at these since I gave you all this assignment because I started on the comp plan. Because the comp plan, these ordinances are only a tool for the comp plan. The Mass Utility Plan is only a tool for the comp plan. So what I'm starting thinking about earlier today, I want to bounce this off of y'all. When we go to a public hearing on the ordinances, I think it should be the start of public information and feedback on the comp plan. I have to try to separate these at this point, I think, is a waste of energy for one. And the sooner we start getting public input into the comp plan itself, will also help us revise because this, I was telling John, I think Don as well. You know, we need to identify the three or four things that are going to have to blow packing. We know number one is subdivision. So if we're having public information and, uh, feedback from the public, coming up with a subdivision, the justification on the changes to it are all based on what we want to do with the comp plan. So I wanted to put that idea in your head. And that would mean I'd like to get this, uh, going after we see the new board. We can have public hearings prior to that, but right now, anything we do right now is just turning to political service. I think y'all know that. So I'm, I'm really hesitant to start, uh, something as important as this before we see the new board. And, but I also want to combine it with, I mean, I want to make this kind of a dual thing. We're getting ordinances so we can develop the comp plan. Because, you know, the Mass Utility Plan, while it does, it's going to come to y'all at some point. It doesn't have to, but you know, I want y'all to see that. Because it's critical to the comp plan and the ordinances. So that, that's kind of the timeline back in my head. And y'all may have noticed, I haven't brought anything to the board to supervise this or anything for a while. And, and that's just because the way it's set up right now, I don't think, uh, things would get the appropriate considerations.
We're looking at storage tanks for long, for, storage tanks for war.
Oh, man, I'm looking at so many things. But the clusters and the, uh, that, that's another thing. So I'm just going into a detail. But if, once the utility plan, which we're, we're setting up and we're gonna have, this is what I want y'all to see. I'm gonna have a perimeter. I'm gonna have a border. This is where we're going. Future expansion is as far as we're going. Cusling that way, I got a little bit down thirty, I'm going up that way, a little bit towards daily. That's gonna be our footprint. So everything built inside of that, of course, will have to be rewarded. The things that you get built any further out, like a cluster or something like that, we're gonna put language, y'all are gonna put language, in our ordinances, requiring systems for ground storage tanks for fire protection. There's a lot of those little details that, um, I'm still working on the best mechanism. And again, the overall, you know, again, ordinances are a tool. Mass Utility Plan is a tool. All of that is just so we can control the growth and manage it. And so that, I hate to expand out that sort of thing, but I don't think it's feasible that not to expand it out.
You mean our initiative? That's what I'm saying. So, so Louis said that we could use a role. I'm adding this to the floor. I may tell y'all the story when I was in grad school, when we reached those type of roles, I'm stable at last, and I was a solator. Now I guess we can double that and it's like a natural. Let's, let's assume that we wanted, what Pop had as a force to be ahead, we wouldn't have it before the election anyway.
I don't think so. That's what I wanted to bring up anyway, but I want to be double that we could too. I hate to say this, but the election may not turn out the way everybody wants. And if it does, we might not get anything after the first year. So I hope that maybe we get it before then. But like you said, I don't think that's any way possible.
If that didn't turn out the way everybody would prefer. I might want to draw a map.
Well, I'm not gonna go with that.
We may not like where it takes us, but we still have to revise the ordinance we've got.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the, I don't know that it may change some of the, it won't change the initiative.
Yeah, but they won't pass it. That's all I'm saying. They will not go for any of it. So it'll be a waste of time. So I'm thinking we already have it in a place. I know.
I'm gonna tell you.
And I'm unfortunate that they seem like they're having a good chance. I mean, four people on three people, the statistics show that that's, they may take over next time.
But that is, that, I mean, and that's not the reason I'm worried. I'm not worried. And, and you know me well.
Oh, yeah.
That I don't care who's sitting up there.
Oh, that's true.
I support every, I work.
Really, right.
I have to work all.
Right.
And the only rea, I just, the lame duck is the, the part that bothers me about, and the politic. And once they're seated, they, everybody, no matter who's on this board, there's not a single person running that is going to go, oh, no, we don't want ordinances anymore. And we don't want the county to be well managed. They might not like.
Managing it.
I'll give you that.
Yeah, you don't want the team.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna, well, I've talked, you know, I've talked to everybody.
And, and, and it doesn't matter to us, it doesn't matter to us whether they're up there, what you know, our work, or they're coming there and looking at our work again, one or more, well, someone would elect it. And they'll be up here, they'll be down here. We're interested in them all.
But, yeah, and that's the thing.
Now, the voting on what actually comes through could change the matter, but we still need to revise them. And, and so again, bring it before the public, before the election. I totally understand and, and, and I agree entirely. We should not be reaching out to the public until after the election, but that's a plus two months from now.
Right.
That's why.
That was probably what I was thinking.
Okay, I, I'm being a little political myself to make everybody feel better.
But I think it also makes sense to have it as one whole package in terms of.
Add it to it. I like that.
They're just so enmeshed.
Maybe.
Yeah, our politicians just think about this election.
I, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything, again, there won't be anything in the revised draft ordinance that would be adversely changed by any change in the comp plan. The, the word I got from the citizens ten years ago, three years ago. Next year is keep grows in the three sixty corridor or keep the rural areas as much as possible. So I don't see that, that, by all means, they should be done in harmony, absolutely. But I, but I'm not even sure on the whole of the ordinances necessarily approval, probably wait for the comp plan.
I guess the question is how long is the comp plan?
Oh, no, we, we're gonna get these ordinances, I mean, this, of course.
So you're saying, so you're giving back on the pub, public hearings.
The public hearings, but the ordinances, yeah, they're going out.
For, okay, yeah, okay.
The, the big reason is we, it's, well, A, I got personal deadlines. And B, we do need, that is another tool, getting these ordinances passed gives us another tool with developers and the citizens and, you know, basically, okay, there's our new ordinances. It makes enforcement stuff a lot easier for us.
If you get, if we get the public involved in the elections, they're gonna have a much better understanding of the whole process and, and.
And so that's, yeah, but we're not gonna wait on the ordinances for the comp plan. Because even if in the course of finishing the comp plan, that, that, and I hate to say this because we're recording it, but when this gets passed, when this set of this draft ordinance becomes the law of the land, um, I'm pretty sure a month later, I'm gonna be doing some text amendments to this ordinance. There's gonna be tweaking. This got to happen. It's not gonna happen. I'm gonna try to capture all the things that I think are important at first. But, but we're gonna go ahead and push this and get it. Because we're gonna have a good ordinance at this point, but there are things.
That are all good part.
That we're gonna have to tweak. And, uh, just to give you an example of some of the stuff I'm doing, I'm working on a solar farm, as all of you know. And I've run into a problem for them, not a problem for me, other than the fact that right now, they can't build that solar farm until they resolve issue. And y'all see this October first. But, um, the farmer, the, the parent tract there is divided into six different parcels. Under our current ordinances, at the agricultural zone, you'd have to have a twenty-five foot setback for any accessory structures. Yeah, that takes out a whole lot of panels. So, and they had choices. They can vacate the lines. They can ask for variance. And, or we can do a text amendment to that portion because there's a lot of things. But the text amendment got me to think when I started looking at it. And there's so, how about, okay, say, we think that solar farms are a viable industry in King William. We already said they can build them. The condition is permit. So say we want some more. I don't like the little ones. So I can do a text amendment, y'all can do a text amendment, that says, hey, you can have zero setbacks on property owned by the same individual for these solar panels. Make it, send use that to incentivize them to come in and build the larger ones. And when you've had a little thing in there, must be greater than twenty megawatts. Just a little tool, a little tweak, but to do something that we want to do. And there's a lot of little things like that that are sprinkled in here. And that's just one example of how probably after we pass this. You know, and it's the same thing with clusters. The cluster subdivision ordinance. You know, I can't bring it, legally, I can't bring it before, to a public hearing, any cluster. But that doesn't mean we can't tweak the cluster subdivision to get what we think we need on it. So a lot of little things like that. So, you know, a lot going on, but priority, let's get this ordinance passed. I'm hoping, uh, we have a good document ready, February, March, to go to the board, but it depends.
So, is, so if we live to work, then we're in March, a little more effective.
Yeah.
May.
I'm, I'm compressing y'all's timeline, but y'all did that to me enough, so I figured.
So, so if we did it before February, March, we would be ready to go to the public in November, we said, or December?
I'm thinking December's really useless for a public hearing. Uh, trying to get private, January, February.
Well, we've done both hearing in January and.
And February.
February, March. So January is a hearing for us. But before that, once you finish our, our magic and, and there'll be very few changes being made between. President Doosent did a job at this, but some. But if we live to probably during January, how much time will the public need to have? Or we're talking November, so they'd have to have two months to, to have meetings and discussions and share. Because I, I think they need to look at some things like.
Which we've got, you know, y'all already agreed that we're gonna have the joint session with the.
Right. And, and, but also the store folks, people that are a piece of it, and there's other folks, people that are pieces as well. So it still sounds like in November, sometime in November, whether it's early or late, we should have this draft revised. So you all did agree with that or disagree with that?
I think we should try to shoot through that because we still, once we get this revised, then we gotta nip it out too.
Yeah, right.
That's where the stakeholders.
Right. So, so if you finish by sometime in November, then the various stakeholders, both official as well as the unwatched masses, can all have a chance to look at it and, and especially developers who will be at.
They're already circling.
Yeah.
Um, and they're, they're getting ready. They are. I'm not kidding. And.
So, so in November, whether it's early or late, we're looking at less than two months from now. How aggressive do we want to be in terms of, of meeting? Because we had talked about having a meeting Thursday. Are you all okay with that? Do you want to do it at seven?
Well, I can't.
So, all right.
But that, that being yours.
Yeah, okay, on, on the work session part, I, and thank you. Because, you know, I'm trying to set the framework for us moving forward. It's, I think a lot of what I would encourage in this, as far as getting together, like, most of you haven't really, I, I don't know how much editing y'all have actually done on the documents. So I think instead of trying to go line by line in a work session, get your documents together, do your edits. We can break it into pieces, like use this as a scheduling session. Everyone should go through and get finished with the definitions.
Like, it's gonna count a lot on what you guys are able to get done outside of these work sessions as well.
I do think that we do need to break it down into the sections because I'm going all over the place.
And that was part of what we wanted to do. Remember the definitions, but you want to be able to see how it fits to the body of text where it does start to spread things out. So if y'all would take a few minutes at this point, at what y'all've seen, how do you want to break the sections down to attack? And then what we can do is plan work sessions. Once all five of you have had a chance to look at each individual section, then we can sit down and then compare them basically and compile. Because my biggest thing is, you know, ninety percent of us, I don't think any of y'all have any issue whatsoever.
Right.
I know I didn't.
The bigger things.
So we break it down, identify those, those items, and that's what we concentrate our work session on. As opposed to, to the word smithing and all of that. You know what I mean? I mean, there, there's just, to get the most out of the work sessions and to come up with a product that we all want, I think we need to do it in that way. And that way, we can work on that individually because, you know, some people are so busy working twelve, fourteen hour days.
No, why? I get to leave here tonight and go back and do some more.
But it, it, it gives a little more flexibility as far as being able to get into it. And, and then their work sessions are a lot more productive that way. Where we're, we're just going brainstorming on the things that really matter. And then, once we knock out those things, then it's just a matter of probably play. And then, you know, this, I've proved this twice and I keep finding things, but they're all nothing important or critical. So the, but then, that's kind of what I want y'all to do is get the critical stuff. And we'll put the rest of it together.
All right. So we need to figure out what we want to work on first, right? We want to categorize this stuff.
How far are we on the definition?
About.
We have a halfway through or to the Cs.
Not very far.
And then again, going through it line by, mostly it is.
About nine Cs.
We're done now. But if y'all could do that independently.
Okay, so can you tell us the last definition that we did?
Sorry, let's see here. Last one we did was communications. All right, so not very far. Okay.
And we won't get very far doing it the way we're doing it.
No.
That's what, that's my point.
And like you said, if the definitions are mostly all right, maybe we could just say if there's danger or something, you have to just get overall, go right to that and just.
And our next work session, we're gonna work on def, if we come to the next work session, it'll be for definitions that y'all had time to go through and then we can just jump into things that matter. You know, if, if some definition is just totally off the wall, it's like, well, I'm what? You know, or this should be this way, or, you know, however we want to slant it, but just going line by line in here, we just won't get. So that's, that, that was two and a half hours to get to the Cs.
And John, if I may, on, on the definitions, I've got three definitions in here that I think just should be thrown out and get for those who have this.
And see, that's, that's a perfect thing for the work session.
Yeah, sorry.
And the first one we talked about, and that is adult visits. Alism. If it's not mentioned in the ordinance, if it doesn't refer to it, then it's not.
Yeah, that's gonna be y'all's call.
Yeah, I think you take that out.
I mean, tell them that, that was what we got stuck on that first time. We got back and forth and back and forth.
But let's plan, I mean, if y'all would, I mean, we'll.
Well, just give us all your three, all of them.
Page twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
You don't read, have to read two parts before you're getting to the second part. For them, the page one, two, and three, fourth and fifth definition. I'm not good at traffic.
What is it?
All of them.
Oh, it's just.
The fourth and fifth.
Fourth.
Yeah.
Page twenty-eight.
I'm figuring the fourth being the fourth.
Well, I don't understand why it's there. It seems like I don't look COVID or something.
Well, but, but, but it is, it is also, you know, the most used, you can swipe it there too.
Same way.
Yes.
Yeah, that goes, that goes to the adult, I mean, that's actually from state.
That's from state.
Yeah.
That definition is right. I have to go get it for you.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it is. I, I think I saw it. Like, I, I would read, swipe those two. And also swipe that use from the use code. Uh, if, if, if it's not addressed, it, it isn't like adult. You can do something else and be able to say, oh, you allow this, therefore you allow that. We have nothing to do with those.
I don't want to put that.
I, I, and again.
There, there are better ways to say exactly.
Just reference a code. Just reference a original code.
Those are, like, pulled out the code and that's exactly this, you know, this goes quicker once y'all had a chance. Like, well, Don's had a chance to look at.
Give us, you can give us, get your, our comments to you and I, and I, I don't know if you got any.
I do not.
And I, I've played through a fair amount of it and I, I can help with those comments.
Well, let's do the, I mean, but let's, if, let's try it this way, John, and, and of course, it's completely up to y'all. Have your comments as we identify the, the sections and then save all your comments. Take the work session for the, for that, or when I, each one of those happens.
Okay, so.
So, so what, what we want, we want to tackle the definitions first that we agree to?
We could finish the definitions and we could say, um, have our comments prepared about the next work session, right? With the objective of finishing up the definitions.
Right. And that way, the work session is, I think, will go a whole lot, where Don just brought up to us tonight. Each one of y'all worked out this.
Yeah, we're only gonna talk about exactly what we.
So is that stadium that Don, that you've already been through them all and those are the three that you've looked at? Okay, okay.
The real problem.
And see, the next work session, when we do the definitions, you'll have two or three of your comments. You might have one or two, two or three, and all of a sudden, we're done. And the definitions of that, that will be done. It just, I think that'll help everybody out.
The, the one caveat that I would share with you all, we may just want to tackle definitions next time, but be ready to have your whole ordinance. Because a lot of times, the, the definitions cross reference to something else. So we won't discuss the other things other than how they find the definitions themselves.
And then that brings me to the second, I hope y'all did by the second area that we have to look at. That's gonna be the cross, that, this is the three I want. The definitions are gonna lead y'all to the subdivision ordinance. Which, of course, is the biggie, as far as I'm concerned. And there's a few other things that are important, but they're just not as big as the subdivision ordinance. So I'll just see how that comes out when y'all, um, finish your definitions.
All right. Well, now the question is, how much time do we want a lot for them to get through the definitions? How soon do we want to kind of jump into that for the next work session?
Next work session is probably gonna have to be weeks from now. If we want to keep any sort of timeline.
We have our regular meeting next week. So we want to go till like the eighth, the following week?
Should we do it later next week? I don't want to do it for a public hearing directly. Uh, I suspect the public hearing, we can kind of wait until the work session after.
Yeah, thank you.
So we, you think, would y'all go next Wednesday or Thursday?
I can do Thursday. I can't do anything.
Y'all might consider it on Saturdays, sorry.
Um, Saturdays are okay. You know, I'm.
I will be out of town with them, so.
But I can cover it for you.
But, but I mean, in, in general, we want to include that Saturdays in our next, but not necessarily that Saturday. So, so are y'all okay for the third, then for our next one, which is a week from the next Thursday?
I can't, I can't, you're like.
I don't have a calendar.
But we know what's your favorite.
And you, but seven, zeros, we can start.
I can, I can go back.
Start really now. If I have stuff, I can just catch up.
Well, that's, that's.
That's where we left it.
Yeah, you'll go first.
I'll jump in.
We'll just have.
So we can do six?
Yeah, we can do six and we'll let Stephen come, go sixth, or fifth of the group as we're going to in the round table.
So everyone's up, is it okay as far as you know? And Don, you'll let us know. But we will set it up for the third, a week from Thursday at six P.M. Is that okay for everybody?
Yeah.
Get two definitions.
Your job right at this point is to remind me that I have.
Right, then we have.
So, I'm in agree, I'm in agreement that subdivision is a good one to then dig into.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I might as well jump and get that up.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
So why don't we do this? We've got definitions, we've got subdivisions on tap. And we, we know those are the two priorities we want to do. Why don't we, after we do the definitions, see where the definitions lead us for the first. Why don't we, after we do the definitions, see where the definitions lead us for the third or fourth? Then we don't have to decide that right now. We've already planned out our next two or three work sessions, I think we'll cover those. And based on those, we can see where the definitions lead us to what we might have to jump into in the balance of it.
Do we want to schedule any more, or right now, we've set one week from Thursday?
Let's walk.
The only, well, the only reason I would say is just because Don doesn't have his calendar and I mean...
With all the debates and stuff after that, it's gonna be small.
I know the tenth, I can have every other day. But let's, we've got to that one, it's a lot of stuff, it's cool, we have a schedule going from there. Like, so this is kind of baby steps, do this, this, and it's really hard this time of year for us, you know, to plan too far ahead, at least for me.
But we're going to wrap it up by November, which is six weeks from now until I'm gonna have to go.
But we're not gonna lose any time by scheduling the next work sessions and the next work session.
Well, if everybody can have their calendars for a week from Thursday, you know what you can do, what you can't do. And, and I, I really want to, I think we need at least three hours for, at least three hours at a time.
Do about six to none.
Otherwise, we started, and I think you should get started yourself there.
Like, tonight's probably...
Yeah, but...
Tonight, it's important to plan and I think it'll be a lot more efficient going forward. I think it's my title.
No, it's not.
Well, so we made the best use of our time for the next one. If we think we're gonna get through the definitions pretty quickly and that's not gonna take our three hours, then what part of the subdivision ordinance do we want to focus on?
Minor.
And, okay.
You're welcome, Stoy.
But I think that is absolutely the most important part.
Me too.
And believe it or not, I don't think it's going to be much, honestly, I mean...
So, do we think that we will get through that?
Yes, I do.
That night?
I do.
Okay.
I think, I think definitions and tax, like, that are gonna be, give them time.
I think we'll be fine. Because I, I know that we have some already, some strong ideas on that, and it's just not a whole lot to cover. It's just a matter of, it's very critical that we put language in there that will work, that I want us to be able to talk about. And, believe it or not, knocking out these definitions, that's the lion's share of this old tolerance. I mean, there's tweaking, like, that's what the definitions will give us to.
One thing I would like to mention to everybody tonight, if everybody has the ordinance, and I'm not making sure of where they are, the, the matrix.
Uh, the permission table?
Right, the permission table, yeah. Here we go. So, one, one issue I had, one, I have one issue...
Page three.
Uh, page eight, yes. One issue I have with existing ones, one, was we had a lot of definitions next to the table.
I'm trying to pull those.
You're not taking the time to look at the definitions where they go along. And then there are some additional things that I'm unsure if kind of before or after, where, where we'll have it either here, and there's additional requirements and so forth and so on elsewhere. But there, there's, are there some instances where we just want to have some additional verbiage here, just thinking about that, I'm not, I don't feel wrong one, where they have, again, uh, 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 some days, like, for example, these churches institutions, I'm thinking, oh, my goodness, what if we had a megachurch and then a less taken care of in another section afterwards, talks about how large and how wide, a whole lot of yard. So, it may be this just fine ads, if, the question is, do we need any additional, uh, and, and do we need any, like, for example, where we have some major things, we've covered in other sections, but, but if there's some additional setbacks for a particular use that would not apply more generally, do we want to institute any of that in here? And I'll get strongly about it, I just, it is a major change from existing ordinance and I want y'all to be showing up, thinking about it, and one, two, the definition will be had here. That's one we take of that, because we'll get to that fairly soon enough then.
Yeah, I think the table will be after the subdivision, because that's the permitted use table and how it ties to the general uses. Again, like you said, we have permit here and then you have to go into the, and that's how I think we'll be more effective.
You're gonna ask us to get any comments to you in a head time and we can, I, I felt sure I'm ready to report next time.
Okay.
Should we send it to everybody, or just you, if you pull the one hand, I'd like y'all to know what I'm thinking, on the other hand, I don't want to influence your thinking.
Um, I think you should influence, and it's not a duly influenced issue.
Yes.
This is a collaborative, we have to do it when we get here.
Right, exactly, everyone has to have those. We just have our discussion, but yes.
I think he's talking about.
The, the existing electronic copy that I have and the others have, has been modified since you sent it, I think you said. You've been hard to catch the things and fixing them.
Not, I'm not gonna share, I mean...
Oh, sure, you want us to share, but you're not...
Pretty much true. I mean, because a lot of what I'm doing is what I've been asking y'all to do, I've been going through it in anticipation of y'all's feedback, and that way, I have it in my head, I'm, I'm straight. But I honestly haven't, that was all done before I, I shifted gears, because I shifted completely off of these two. I, I confess that to y'all already.
Well, but I'll ask this, I think there's a couple of copies that are bound. Mine, I just printed out, my page numbers don't coordinate, I would like to have copies so we're all talking on the same page.
I'll get it from you, it's not hard. Yeah, that's what I do.
Okay, what, what we'll do, because the page number, yours has page numbers?
No, mine doesn't.
Does yours have page numbers?
Or it does.
Okay, I went through, I, it's in, it's in the file, in my ordinance file. Find the latest version that I did it, because that's the one I put the page numbers on, I've made all the, whatever little things that y'all, you know, if you haven't seen stuff, so y'all, I've never even noticed that.
I will go ahead, get those printed out tomorrow and they will be delivered to y'all tomorrow, but you two are set correct, so just the three of y'all will use them.
Okay, that way we're all talking on the same page.
Absolutely, that's, that is, that's what...
Well, that was one of the... Because I want to get through it the quickest way we can and best efficiently, there's this grandeur.
You have the version of mine.
Yeah.
I have the page numbers on the home.
Well, actually, I just found something as I was flipping through it, it had a page number in the middle of the page and I went, I don't even know how that happened, so...
I know when I was first brought up to y'all, I was like, this won't work without page numbers, and I went and made up one, so we had page numbers and it made it easier, and I failed at least two of you. No, just one, you're the only one that failed. I think, you have page numbers?
Probably because I told you I printed it for myself, but...
And you might have just sent it out before I, because I...
Very important, because I would not get copies. That would help me show them.
It's not in the old, or is this, you won't find it online, you won't find it in code, you can find it online, that's a cop on my computer, because that's about, and then the board of supervisors pack it when they pass the cluster ordinance.
So...
It doesn't exist.
Okay, so I'm looking for the cluster.
Oh, wait, there should be a cluster, there's...
Where is it?
Um, it's gonna be this... I know it's in here.
I believe it was kind of...
Uh, eighty-six dash four three two, what am I, seventy-five?
Yeah, that's major. Control F. I feel like control F.
It skips.
And...
A lot more you gotta find.
Oh, I'm sorry, then just type in cluster.
So, did you have a bunch of that?
So, I...
I'll find it. Now, I'm, I'm missing nine pages.
And it actually skips in a couple places, if you look at some of the other pages, division three and division four, there's, it may be that they're missing.
But, um, yeah, the cluster right now is not an easy ordinance to find in.
Okay, so my question, my next question is, just because I'm trying to get my arms around everything still relatively, is the cluster ordinance, I know family subdivisions are required by law. So, cluster ordinance?
Yes.
I can't find it in the Virginia code where it's required.
I will find it for you because one of the requirements prohibits me from having a public hearing, which is...
Okay, I just wanted...
I had a big...
There was a, they could have eleven of them, or, 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 of the state, and then one version after that.
Right, so it's, um, and the county, the county would violate, I mean, actually, the lawsuit, so, so I'll, if I, I'll try to find it for you and...
So, are we going to be then looking at the cluster ordinance?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's gonna be one of those things. There's a lot of tweaks to the cluster that I want to get in, and that's sort of the other reason I want this passed, the ordinance is passed in January or February, because I've got three or four clusters that you have, and I'd rather have than have to do, so... Of course, on the solar farms, I'm holding them to the solar farm, and then you, you know, I have a little bit of leeway because it's condition of use permitted, and so, it's definitely gonna need all the comments. And the, the cluster I want to get done before three people I know try to do clusters, because we're talking sixty to a hundred houses, and I want, I don't want to have to argue and fuss and fight, because I won't have y'all the backing on that, unfortunately, with clusters. I don't have the option of coming if y'all, you know, bailing me out of the situation, I don't want to be...
Do we want to move forward that faster, we could, we could actually revise that separate from this.
We could, I think we're gonna be okay, because construction season just ended. I know, um...
Planning season's starting.
And, yeah, nothing happens sometimes, so...
Yeah, but that might be even more of a reason to try to get that.
Uh, I've, to be honest, I wouldn't take that to this point, at this point.
Just time frame before next year.
Yeah.
We could date it to December.
It's possible. Let me look, I mean, if I get a chance, and honestly, I'm, I apologize upfront, I can't commit to a whole lot, because I've got a whole lot on my...
But, but you think that when you get done, like, making life easier, then...
Oh, yeah, uh, the, the cluster is, I mean, getting the nuance, which makes it easier when they, make it easier for me to make them do what we want, it won't take the workload. It's just another hammer that I want to put box.
Alright, so, but you're saying that you know three that are going to be large?
Three potential, I mean, of course, y'all know how this county works, rumors and everything. The one, one of them is a major subdivision, it's already been approved, it was approved back in two thousand six, two thousand eight.
That Jim, I think you're right.
No, he's, he's still out there somewhere, but he's, he's not gonna do a cluster now, he's probably just gonna do a major. He can't need the lot support. The cluster is out paying, I don't know, out thirty, just up from, before you get into, I can have trouble.
Off the third, off the third year one?
Off the thirty. He's already been approved to run, I may, no, he might be the other one, three sixty toward Taylor, sorry.
We had one on six eleven, it was approved about that time, during...
That's the one. Because he, he got approved to extend the water line and a hundred and eighty houses out there. Uh, there's some different things happening with that, but we may go the cluster route, because he'll get, he'll probably pick up thirty or forty more lots, and we don't have to be doing a lot size on the cluster. And from a comprehensive plan standpoint, that's ideal location for, for...
That I could go subdivision, I thought, but some of the others are...
And then I've got one off Cuz, right at Cuz Lane, which is the outer limits of development, as far as I'm thinking, air con plants, and probably that's gonna be the outer, that will be thirty that way. And then I've got a couple hundred homes potentially going in off of Kelly, Kelly Lane back in there, but that's going, if things go well, that's gonna be a P U D, on mixed use, and, uh, actually a planned, uh, P U D planned, uh, thing. That, that area just, there's a lot of land back in there, um, I think. Enough, it's down across the street from me.
Oh, that's next to the tractors, I had the sun issue, it turned blue and then it fell wrong or something, and I was like, where are any of those?
I know, and, and then...
Couple hundred?
Drop out.
I guess it goes all the way back to...
Spreads.
A tractor in that gully and goes...
Five, six hundred acres back in there. Some of it, it'll make a great cluster for one reason, because of that steep part there, you put that conservation, but I don't think that's the next living cluster, I think that's going to be a mixed use.
Oh, you said so.
I'm implementing it in them, and it looks like that may happen. So, right there, let's see where I'm gonna put it, three hundred and eighty homes in two lots, and wonder why I'm not seeing that, I, because I've gotta figure out where I'm gonna put a couple water towers.
But again, what do we need to do to help you with the cluster ordinance?
Right now...
Before you have those three coming?
I think we're okay right now, before I have to really push, the only reason I'm gonna push it, it won't make my job easier as far as the workload, you know, having to do stuff, it'll just make, now I don't have to argue with them.
Right, you'll have to set rules, what they...
Yeah, we don't have to interpret.
Well, there's no prepared to do this.
It's right there, you're engineering, agreed as well as I can, and then I can...
But again, that'll save you time then, instead of you having to haggle with them constantly.
Yeah, I'm, they're learning I don't haggle with them. A little angry, I still don't haggle with them, yeah, I'll get something to, to, I mean, it will help me. And I'll try to get that worked out, because there's a lot of details to, just my concerns with fire response times and it's, and there was the Greenwood, and there's, I've got infrastructure issues that we have to address. And something as simple as Ailid, the only township village around, do you know our firing police, sheriff can't talk to each other on the radio because it's a dead spot, you know?
Yeah, they talked to them.
They keep me awake and not going, if they come up by where they came from.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, very...
And then freeze over to the back.
Look at my concentration. And when the fire trucks are pulling out of Station One, or the EMTs, guess what, their radios don't work fully, it's a...
Fifteen seconds, like...
So, is Ailid, is, is Ailid unincorporated, there's nothing that's...
No, it's a village, in my mind.
Okay, so there's no...
My vision is, it's a village. And, and it has post office and it's called Ailid, I mean, so it's, you have an address in Ailid?
Well, it doesn't have a post office, that is the post office for, that is part of the county, so, it's not actually located in Ailid, it's a, it's a post office, but the...
The zip code is Ailid.
Developed, well, yeah, it's still mine, I'm not looking, so...
Yes. You're allowed, they said it was okay.
And I'm watching.
We have built out any nails, it's enclosed.
So, the definition is thirty pages, and we have two hundred page ordinance, that's one seventh of it, and we want to get a couple times a week, uh, in, in October and, and November.
Why don't we see how quickly it goes in the next work session, and then we can see how quickly we need to...
But I definitely think at the end of each work session, we need to.
Let me go.
Push the next one, let's get it.
I, I don't have to advertise, um, so this isn't a public hearing stuff. So these work sessions, we, we have to let everybody know we're having, that the public, they're open to the public.
I thought there was still a rule with ours, I thought.
Don't quiet down.
It's in there.
It can't be a contingent, so.
That's true, too, if we can get by, I would just say.
But, but we don't have to go to the newspapers, it's not like a public hearing.
But does it need to be publicized on the county website?
Yes, yeah.
Because tonight's wasn't.
That's what I was wondering, too, because I didn't even know this meeting was legal, because that wasn't advertised.
Well, it's, it was a continuation from our last meeting, so.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't.
We made a change in the work session.
I told a bunch of people we're having, and so, does that count?
Not really.
And so, you know, that's right, when I recessed, but we recessed until the next, so that's what we'll do, we'll recess tonight.
For, for our next meeting.
And our bylaws, so we say that it has to be publicized for our work session. It does not, although.
Those were the convenient things about work sessions.
That's what I hate about, oh.
Now, we do need to make sure.
Whether we publicize an agenda or anything, yes, going forward, I think it would be good to at least let Olivia know to have that one decided for sure.
Yes, and it's just a work session, it doesn't have to have an agenda, doesn't have to have a package.
Chris, to remind me, to remind you.
I'll remind myself.
Take four, will you please make sure?
I got it.
Thank you.
Good, big deal. So, okay.
It'll go on the calendar, if you need calendar. And then we'll have little words, like, thank you for the work sessions for E D A and for B O S.
I mean, it's, it's only subdivision of, uh, what do you call this? Can I, work session, uh, it's only subdivision work session continued from the September planning meeting on the sixth of August on the.
We can continue from the rehearsed meeting, but we have one next to the. And I think Chris is right, we should, at the end of each work, or like we did this work session, we said the next one, we'll have a good feel for how well we can get through these things.
Yeah, actually, we can adjourn this one, because we'll be having a planning meeting next week, and then go on to the Thursday.
Running up and always, going to have a work session.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
So we'll, we'll do the definitions and we'll start looking through the minor, we'll start looking through the subdivision, just depending on how.
Subdivision, so, or minor subdivision, so, that next up, definitions.
Yes.
Okay. Do we wanna play out what's gonna come after minor, just so we can start?
At that point, um, I would like for all of you that, the minor's the biggie, but look at the major, look at, um, I really don't think we wanna touch family, but you can take a look at family, because we do, I mean, we can change, you know, the, we can change the family, we can change all of them. And I'll do the legal part.
As, as far as family, one thing to ask you guys, how do you feel about family subdivisions for hands, mobiles, pieces, nephews?
Nope, no.
The state says it has to go, whatever the state, I'm going.
Hands, mobiles, pieces, nephews are not required.
Okay.
Hours does allow, y'all want to allow or not.
And see, that's the kind of thing that we should.
The current one allows it. The current one does allow.
It's, it's.
Well, the, 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 the ground wars allow.
Yeah, I think that's a tangent too far, too, it's just a, even if.
Two days.
Getting too far out there.
But that is exactly the types of things we're gonna be taking.
Right, yes.
We got one subdivision, Nebraska, for me, that has eight lots of that sort of. And all it was done was to get around the, um, subdivision. And the state wanted to go along with minor subdivisions, so it's the one that got that pushed through.
After the meeting, remind me to address your issue. The, uh, in Gilbert, I mean, Haringland.
Yeah.
I have the update for you. But yeah, those are the kind of, again, if we take a look at each one of those, um, and, and that way we can sit down and not run out.
And then just throwing out there for November, um, we may potentially only have three weeks, unless we went for like Monday, Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday on that week because of Thanksgiving.
So it's Thanksgiving night?
Yeah, you can.
Holiday, we'll take better Thanksgiving. I said elections live and better.
Yeah, I was thinking about Veterans Day. Um, but I know, I think we're half a day on the twenty-seventh and then twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, so.
And the twelfth, right?
Yeah, so we're definitely gonna have to.
You weren't there, too.
You should have heard me when somebody said we had some Monday coming.
Columbus Day.
I'm like, though, when do we ever work?
I don't know, there was any holiday in, I was over.
At least they took away our half a fair day, what do you expect?
Can I ask that? We do one other thing at some point and we don't have to do it, but, um, I did have comments to the purpose of the chapter, so I think that's important. The very beginning, I think it just needs. Girlfriend, mark that page, huh? And I also want to ask you all, um, is there, um, in ordinance or a county ordinance subdivision zone that you all have been checking out, that you think is a good town?
I've been using Buckingham and Automall.
Okay, because you think they're doing it right and they're, and the ordinance is clear, kind of thing?
I have a lot of respect for the Automall planner and their lawyer. You don't want to look at me like that's such a bad thing.
No, no, I don't think at all.
It's shocking that I didn't think of any of this.
No, I think that's a good, I mean, I think it's a good thing.
He, he's been very involved for twenty years. He's, he's a really bright man, which is, Buckingham's a very rural, very similar to us. They had a planner there who actually, her fingerprints are all Rebecca, this is the one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So she was the.
Community meetings that they have.
Buckingham is a very rural.
Signing sheets, which is one of the problems to have.
State park that's in the middle of it.
Good. I looked at Hannover and I like Hannover, it's like their definitions are simplified.
I have four to hand you guys, this is for next week, for the Sweetsu Solar that is coming to you guys. We're gonna have some community meetings, and these are signed in sheets, I made copies for everyone to have, just for reference. So these will be something for you guys to have to go with that packet.
He's one of those squeaky wheel type people, you know, what can you do?
Oh, they're stop, I'm leaving this to Dr. Mike. Well, y'all are gonna be dinner, huh?
Actually, I haven't even listed the list.
He was, they had the last.
The last one, this should be the last.
First part of the meeting, and then put down on the other side of the room.
Well, I told him to come, and, you know. But I'm in trouble for everybody, I don't discriminate. Okay, well, I'm glad you did, kind of how, how we call you.
When I finally came back from.
And, well. Should be yours just a little bit.
On Sunday, that Sunday after the day before my first day back.
Yes, sir.
I booked a vacation.
As this is our last session before the next planning meeting, uh, is when we concluded our business, reading new business, new digital business beyond our current. It's not on a ten which is a turn. So, it's a turn, it's probably second of all, big say I'm up.
Do you know this, for my black bean soup, and we are prepared to enjoy it.
So we are turned.
Thanks, Samantha, go for it. Stop, go hit the wrong button.
Just kidding.